I'd like to call to order, please, the work session on Monday, March 31st. Let me get this microphone close enough. And we all will have tonight, two work sessions and a regular meeting. The first work session, of course, is our joint meeting of the City Council and the Planning and Zoning Commission. There will be a second, as I said, work session with only the City Council immediately following after the joint work session. The regular meeting needs, I'll say it again, needs to start at 6:00 PM because we have public hearing. So we'll start off by announcing that Councilwoman Campbell is not here this evening. She will not be attending any of the meetings. And so I'd like to, I have the honor of introducing the Planning and Zoning Commission. Before I do that, you're a Board of Jules. I thank you so much. I have felt that way since 2005. The way you vet things for us, and I can see by the building permits, the time coming, we're going to even have more. And so I really trust you and look at, I read the papers and what you've put down from the meetings. I think we all are saying, yes, we do. So let's start out with, first of all, our Chairman, Lucas Schlosser. Just raise a hand for anybody that might be from the citizens and the audience. And Vice Chairman, Chairman Ryan Peters. Okay. And Commissioner Leslie Miller. Commissioner Kathleen Short. Commissioner Vicki Hamilton. Commissioner Randy Barnes. And Commissioner Patrick Bray, who is not here at this time. Is he coming?
We do anticipate Mayor and Patrick will join.
Oh, good. All right. Well, we'll just acknowledge him when he comes in, okay? We have only one item, but it's a big one for this joint discussion. Staff will provide an overview of the elements of the Design Guidelines Manual being updated and gather direction on express design issues. We have a consultant, and I'm going to let you, if you would, Sherri, please introduce the consultant.
Mayor and council members, we have with us this evening Norah Winter. As you recall, a few months ago, we had the good fortune of going out for RFP on a Design Guidelines Consultant, and Winter and Company was the successful respondent. Our team has had the good fortune of working with his team over the last few months in updating and fine tuning our design guidelines. As you will recall from our earlier discussion, Winter and Company has experienced both large and small in communities across the country, working on design guidelines, communities such as San Diego, their hometown of Boulder, Colorado, and most recently, working in Chandler, Arizona, on a few projects. So quite a distinctive resume. But most importantly, what drove us to include them on our list of potential respondents was their experience in understanding rural moving to urban potentially, or high-rise versus residential, and some of the complexities of differing villages and neighborhoods, and the integration of our commercial and residential throughout the community. And that is really the strength that they bring in their architectural and design experience.
Great. Thank you. And Hector Tapia, our Development Service Deputy Director, will present. And thank you for being here this evening, and we're looking forward to your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I should start the slides first, and then I'm going to jump in.
So Mayor, with that, we'll get started. I wanted to remind council, of course, that the most important concern when we're dealing with any changes to our policies are strict adherence to the City Council's strategic plan. And the crucial elements of that, as we all recall, fiscal and resource management, economic vitality, sense of community, and quality of life. And in all things, the design guidelines meet these criteria. From the perspective that every day, development impacts our quality of life in the community and our sense of community, most importantly, from the built environment and the non-built environment, the spaces between the built environment. Also certainly, from an economic vitality perspective, there's a direct impact every day in those types of development which we permit and those which we encourage in our community. And most importantly, the bottom line, the fiscal and resource management that happens as we are successful in our development and maintaining vital communities. Certainly, the economic development vitality and the development vitality of the community is dependent upon that which the city manager does as well. One of his objectives this year is to enhance the environmentally conscious initiatives and the city codes that support a clean, well-maintained, and sustainable community. We go one step further, and we interpret that to mean that we want high-quality development, well-designed and built environments. And to that end, we heard strongly from council over the last year that our design guidelines were not meeting the needs of the development community. And we also had heard from our staff and also our Planning and Zoning Commission that several of our projects had needed some tweaking, if you will, over the years, that our standards were not those which were necessarily developer-friendly, nor flexible to the development community. So that was our intent with the design guideline tune-up, and I think that we've hopefully met many of the concerns and addressed those and provide very prescriptive direction to staff and the development community with the solutions that we reached in this document. And with that, I wanted to again remind council that we started with a vision, we came up with an objective, we hired Winter and Company, we've worked on a very aggressive timeline and project schedule, and then we've been updating the strategies here for the last six weeks. And we have before you this evening a proposed document for consideration, and we'll talk a little bit about the next steps. Again, I think it's important to realize that we are integrating the site planning and the area between the buildings, that we're concerned with landscaping, hardscaping, lighting, signage, materials, colors. All of those elements are those which are addressed in the design guidelines and provide direction not only to the staff in working with the development community, but provide direction to the development community when considering Goodyear. Most important piece that we follow, of course, is our general plan when we're talking about development standards. We're just wrapping up our general plan, as everyone here is intimately aware, and we're very excited about the interaction of the design guidelines with the general plan, with the Parks and Rec Plan, with the transportation plan, how all those provide prescriptive direction again, and then feed into the zoning ordinance, which is really directive. So the zoning ordinance provides us with specific do's and don'ts, where the others are more of a prescriptive, and the general plan is the vision for the community for growth. With that, I wanted to jump into some of the elements of the design guidelines update. So as you all will recall, we went to city council members, we went to the city staff, and we held several open houses with our development partners to understand those concerns that were most reticent to us today. Our architectural design flexibility. Many of you have expressed concerns about the flexibility, whether it's colors, materials, size, placement. We also want clarity and predictability in our design guidelines. We also were concerned with materials, colors, signs, continuity of theme, site layout, and of course, circulation is another issue that we heard from you as well. To that end, the first step in our direction with our consultant was to develop a spreadsheet, and all of you received this in advance of the meeting this evening. These were the primary concerns that came out of our open houses and our discussions with the development community, and many of these issues are those which were tuned up in the design guidelines. To that, I wanted to hand the discussion over to Norah and let him tell us a little bit about what he found when he got to Goodyear and what he uniquely found necessary in our tune-up.
Thank you, Sherri. And we will tag-team a fair amount of the presentation from here on, a lot of it I will speak to, but because this really has been a collaborative effort, there are going to be several points, I think, where staff will want to join in as well. This is my frequent flyer strategy map, which basically shows our project locations across the country. West Virginia and Delaware have not seen the light yet to hire Winter and Company, but the other states in the U.S. have for a variety of reasons. That's given us a perspective, and especially has, is, of design review and design guidelines. And of course, the biggest lesson learned is that while there are lessons to share, every community is unique and has its own goals and ambitions, and you have to respond to that and respect it, which is what we really strive to do. But I will say that given our perspective, what we found here in many respects is a community that's been doing a lot of good work. While there definitely are questions and issues that have been raised, you have absolute right to be proud with what you have accomplished. When I drive over the city line, I know I've moved into Goodyear. There's something that speaks about Goodyear. And so we entered this project understanding that we needed to remember that and not lose that in these updates. I'll let Hector talk just for a minute about schedule.
Yeah, thank you, Nora. As you can see the schedule that you see on the slide there, we start back in February to start trying to find information about the existing conditions. So in February 21st, we have initial conference with a consultant, Norah and his staff, and try to communicate what was happening in Goodyear. And during that time, like Nor mentioned, is that there's a lot of good stuff, as myself too, coming as new three months ago, I also was encouraged to be working with the city of Goodyear because I saw the architectural design already in place. But during that discussion, we said, what are we need, is something we're missing right now? And, well, yes, there are some things that we can do, but I mean, it's not a much. For example, an idea, the integration of the public space between, beyond this. Right now, I think we're missing that on the side layout, side design. And Nor will show some examples of how we can integrate the building design to bring people into the area, not to have isolated open spaces, but how we can bring people into the area. So that in the key of this right now, the last, you know, mountain of health that got us to this point, and how we can actually keep the best part of the design guidelines, but also integrate something that we're missing. So right now, on my turn, first, we are in the middle of so far how much information and work has been done by the consultant, and also planning staff, working with Nor, and trying to identify what we need to do for the next years to come.
We know that this is an ambitious schedule, it's one that you asked for, and so we've been delivering a lot of material to you.
We're impatient, I just have to use that. It's a patient council.
And so I realize there's a lot to absorb, and we've tried to select a few things to highlight this evening with an understanding that it'll be the tip of the iceberg in that respect.
Might I ask council members also, we'd like this to be interactive with you as well, so please, at any point, jump in and, and please, you know, ask the question, ask the tough question. Give us examples of if you think we've not hit it.
All right. Thank you.
We hope that we will address the issues that you've raised, and if not, we'll be able to answer the question about how we did or intend to do so. The, I've already alluded to the fact that as we looked around, we were able to see the results of the guidelines in action. There's a sense of scale, there is a sense of continuity of design within the city and within individual development projects that gives a sense of identity. That said, there certainly, we understand our questions about, are there other ways to skin that cat? Are there other ways to still be Goodyear and offer more flexibility? And we've sought to introduce those ideas. But in terms of architecture, in terms of massing, in terms of the quality of design overall, it's a very high-quality product that you have. And we've seen in our experiences across the country that that is a valuable business recruitment asset to have. When, today, when businesses think about where they're going to locate, you know this, it's quality of life that's one of the decision-makers. Other more conventional factors for job growth are certainly a part of it, but they're looking to, how do I, when I say, where do you live? We live in Goodyear, is what you want them to say, and say it with a smile. So that's part of what we wanted, that we saw in the way the built environment was emerging already. And these are just a few of those examples, and that relates to the architecture, the site design. And while the images here are focusing perhaps on the commercial developments, we looked at all of the different land use categories.
But I will say, I thought they were good examples, and I think they were examples that we forget that are there.
Well, exactly, Mayor. And in several cases, some of the questions people ask reflect, and we see this a lot, you'll get a perspective in your mind of something, and you forget about the full range of the spectrum of design that does in fact exist out there. That relates to some of the questions about an assumption about certain restrictions of materials, something or other, when in fact, when we looked around, there was more in use than you might have initially thought. And that is a very important fact to consider here. And you'll see it more later in our attempt to really do what we're calling visual menus that show a whole range of design solutions and materials, et cetera, for that very reason. Because the existing guidelines, and this was one of our findings really, was that just the nature of their format, often a guideline would have one picture to illustrate it. And it almost implied that was the only solution. And so what we've done as a part of this project is to introduce in appendix form because the Microsoft Word format for the primary document is not very amenable to having a lot of photographs in it. You'll see that we're generating a lot of this as appendices and referencing those in the primary document for that very reason, where you can begin to see a whole spectrum of design solutions for whatever the particular design variable is that's being discussed. So what did we see when we looked at the document? In several cases, it needed clear links to these fundamental community policies, as in the general plan. You'll see now in the introduction, much more discussion about that. Why is that important? When anyone asks, why are you asking me to do X? Now in the introduction, you can say, it's because the community adopted that policy in the general plan. That's why we're asking you for design continuity, or to have buildings that are pedestrian-friendly, et cetera, because it is part of what the community has asked for. The other is that some of the issues relate to, what is the level of design consideration or context that you're dealing with? When you say you want continuity, are we talking about citywide, or within a particular neighborhood, or within a particular project, or even an individual site within that project? And the considerations of diversity versus continuity change as you think about those different levels of design. So we've tried to introduce that rationale early in the document, because right now, when we looked at the guidelines, it often would say, you need to respect the context, but it didn't say, are we talking about the building next door, or are we talking about our neighborhood? And so we've tried to introduce more of that kind of a discussion.
I'm going to point out, you're going to the first one, the design, clarity, four-sided design, continuing transition areas. We just recently met with a developer, and it was, the backs, some of the backs were going to be on Camelback. And my comment was to him, isn't it a shame that we forgot in the back of the house, and that we don't consider that anymore? And I guess that was our, being conciliatory to the developer or the builders, they don't have to pay so much because trim does cost a lot, but it does tell, it does draw a picture for the neighborhood. It can be a good picture or a bad picture. So one of my elements that I'm trying to get across to them when they come in is, there are certain areas, it's not always, it's not always, but that's an incentive for buying your home backing up to a street, especially a four-lane street. And I think of people that are on Indian School, where I lived, backing up, well, what a nice feature that would have been, to know if you bought that home site, which is going to be cheaper, and you're not going to sell it very easily, okay, it's not one of the high, that the back would have something. So I know that's not, that's totally against the building industry, but I've seen it since I've been in sales in the 90s, that it was really a lacking in developing homes. And there's so many homes looking in the backyard of somebody's home.
I would say there is a trend around the country that we're seeing of the concept that there is no backside, should be no backside to a development. There may be different degrees of sensitivity, but there isn't any place that people don't see or experience from one side or another in an urbanizing environment. And it's the transition from a rural setting now to...
Do we develop these words if we're in this industry? Because that was so poetic. Thank you. I mean, the way you put it is, your words are very well-chosen, so that's exactly...
Well, and you will start seeing now in zoning language and in design guidelines around the country, for a long time, the edge between a commercial development and a residential development, buffer was the word used, meaning screen it, and we're not going to interact with each other. And now, the terminology being used is transitions. It's a transition from one use to another land use, and it should be a compatible one. And it means rethinking the way that service areas happen. And, I mean, there are backsides of building service needs. They don't go away, but they have to be planned in a better way and designed in a better way. And they're not just pushed to the end of your site because your edge is someone else's front, as you were just saying. And so that's a part of where the language in the guidelines is now beginning to talk about that as an interface and a transition rather than a barrier or a buffer.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Bill?
So, following the mayor's, I'm going to say logic.
Thank you.
If we've got houses, in using that Camelback, the houses that back up to Camelback, the back of them, what I'm hearing is, may be treated differently than the two houses that back up street to street. Is that, have I correctly tracked that? Does that...
Yes, yes. And I think in new design, you should be promoting that more, because the, for many of those residential subdivisions, right now, the way of dealing with is you put up a wall, and therefore, you pretend there's not a highway or an arterial there.
Right.
You know? And that is, has a lot of limitations, which you are all aware of, in terms of interfacing with the neighborhood and connections that can happen, and even the way those things would be designed. It changes the way you would be laying that out at the outset, because you would be knowing that that edge would be a different one than a barrier.
I think the other thing in response to your question, Councilmember Stiff, is creating that sense of place. So not forgetting that while you drive by your neighborhood every day, that you have a sense of place, whether even if it is a retention basin or a park, that the wall has material in it that's interesting, and colors and variation of materials, that the house itself has different window types and different heights of windows and so forth, that create interesting sense and safe sense of place. And that's really what we're looking for, both on the commercial and on the residential. And having clarity in our standard to articulate to the development community, these are your options on a menu, that you must meet a minimum of these, and we'd hope you would exceed them.
So just to, just to make sure that, because now I've heard two different things. I have a two-story house that backs up to the main road. The back of it, of that house, may look different than the two-story that backs up to the ranch, the single-family, or a single-story within the subdivision. Is that, have I, I do have that? Okay. Perfect.
And while at the guideline level, a lot of that has to do with subdivision planning and probably is more relevant in some of the zoning regulations, anticipating that kind of thinking, you will notice language, for example, is a small change, but not just showing examples of masonry walls as barriers, but beginning to introduce fences as ways of defining a property edge that's more transparent. That all of a sudden is now mentioned as an option that could occur there. So it relates to that idea.
Joanne?
Well, I just wanted to add that I appreciate that it wasn't one type fits all, because when we talked four-sided design, my first concern was for the, for the commercial developer, industry developer, that, you know, they, they might see that this is just where the trucks come and, you know, drop off their items, or this is where the trash can is, things like that. I don't want to make someone go and spend a ton of money decorating their trash can area. But at the same time, you phased it into different wall types, and so you did take that into a sensitive thought. And so I do appreciate that, because that, you know, at the very blush of looking at it all, it was like, uh-oh, what's going to happen to these developers that are going to be screaming, you're making me spend another, you know, I don't know how much money. So I really do appreciate that you did take that into consideration.
But the price...
And phased it, and phased it into places.
The price point of that is, as a sales rep, those are the home sites that sell last.
I'm not talking about home sites.
No, no, no. Well, any of them, and so that's where...
Shopping centers, commercial centers, you know, if it's, if a residential area is backing up to it, it's a different look compared to industrial, industrial building, industrial building, industrially. So you did take that into consideration.
Well, and what, we'll get into that a little bit more detail here in the presentation, but it relates to a lot of the thinking here. We've tried to set up a more rational structure for interpreting the guidelines and policies you already have, of making it clearer both for the staff and for the property owner what's expected, and what the range of negotiation, if you will, is that's appropriate. And the four-sided design is the easiest one perhaps to address. And so what you will see is that we've begun to define more clearly that, yes, we do want continuity of design, there is no backside, but it is true that some walls don't need to be as treated as highly or richly as others. Now, what we've introduced though is a rationale for determining which of the walls are like that, and which ones would need the higher level of design. And so you'll see, we've classified them as type A, B, and C, and given some criteria that would help everyone sort of understand when I've got an A-type or a B-type wall. Because we, we thought about it, we didn't want to set up a situation where the back wall said, we don't care to the community. We still wanted to convey some sense of caring, and yet also recognizing that there is a price point, there is a cost to that. But there's also the impact on the value of the property abiding. And, you know, the door swings both ways in terms of how is value created for a property, and that's a part of what we want to think about. Even when we edit it, while the commercial mixed-use projects are the ones that are coming to mind most immediately, it also was really clear in the industrial areas, the same thing. And you would certainly, in some cases, say, oh, the loading side of an industrial building, who cares? Well, out here, when I drive around, I see those buildings from a half a mile away, and they are saying something in terms of what the community is like. Now, at that distance, do I have to have a lot of rich architectural detail? Probably not. But a certain level that says, there's a design continuity here, I relate to this development, and I relate to Goodyear. And that's what we were trying to come up with in the system that we'll show you in a minute.
And the pictures say a thousand words, too. I mean, that probably...
Well...
I'm sorry, Jo, he had a question, I think, involved in this.
You know, I appreciate the continuity part. I've had relatives come here from out of state, and actually accolades about how the city looks. And I always say to myself, we'll be long gone, whatever we approve is going to still be standing. So, and I appreciate the flexibility, I really do. But I think Goodyear's look and feel is real important as well, when we come in, and I appreciate you hitting on those keys. I look at Sub-Zero, and I look at Dick's. I'm sure there could have been a lot of ways to skimp on those particular projects, but because of the design guidelines, number one, you look at those buildings you buy, they're nice-looking, lay-down buildings. They really are. So I appreciate that, I understand the costs associated, but also know that, you know, I still like that look and feel of Goodyear. So whatever we do, the blending, as this thing starts to go from one commercial or whatever, that house goes there. On the same piece, though, I really liked your spreadsheet, being a numbers guy. The question is, since I don't do this day in and day out, I still had some questions on some of the details. One of the things that's close to my heart is the metal buildings, okay? And when I'm talking about metal buildings, I know art is in the eyes of the holder, but I want to make sure there's checks and balances as we go through there. And I, you know, I've seen treatments where I look at Cavaleros. I like that design. And then there's been others that we've agreed to disagree on, where I don't think that design really meets the quality of the city of Goodyear. Is there checks and balances in here as far as that, does that have to go through the Planning Commission? Does it have to come to council? I mean, what determines where that metal building is going to go within the city? Do you put one going down Boulder? Do they need a PAD? Can you clarify that for me when it comes to metal buildings?
Sure. So there are a couple places in the design guidelines where we talk about primary, secondary, and trim, and it relates to color and materials and so forth. So in these design guidelines, metal is recommended as a trim element in most cases. So for example, the new Oregano's project that's proposed around our mall site has a roofing material that's a concrete asphalt roofing. And then it has a metal roof component as well. So it has some different materials and the trim, then also a different color from the metal roof and the asphalt roofing. Very traditional Oregano-style design. And that's where we talk about primary, secondary, and trim. So that's just a trim element. And you'll see a slide in here where we talk about glass and metal and things that might be more modern architecture, and how those are appropriate. Metal building being in a completely separate category, so that's more of a zoning ordinance consideration, and there are certainly areas in our community where we by PAD might allow a metal building, which is a zoning and a council action certainly, but not primarily stipulated in any case as a primary, secondary, or trim feature that would make an entire metal building in the design guidelines.
Thank you. Go ahead. Oh, Sherri, excuse me.
And to basically follow up on the vice mayor's questions about some of the flexibility, I was thinking about the residential. We do have a very good look and feel in some of our communities, but I know as, kind of, sometimes there's these trendy little communities and trendy ideas that come in that may not be covered. If someone brings a really quality project and it's not covered, what is the procedure for them to try to get that into the city if it's something new and innovative?
What we've suggested in the guidelines is there's sort of three levels of... What we've suggested in the guidelines is there, there's sort of three levels of flexibility, if you will. One is within the guidelines, the use of the concept of menus, that to meet this guideline, there are six things you can choose from here. Some of those have always been in the guidelines, maybe they're not as visually apparent and they're not illustrated. So we've, we've begun to introduce some of those. The second way of dealing with particularly the creative idea that you didn't anticipate is the idea of intent statements preceding a set of guidelines. What is the objective that we're trying to accomplish here? So an intent is, for example, we want the street edges of buildings to be pedestrian-friendly. The guideline may say, provide storefronts. Well, that's one way of doing it, but there are other ways of doing it. I could have a decorative wall of architectural articulation, I could have sculpture, I could have landscaping, I could have a variety of options that would still be pedestrian-friendly. So we have, that's an example of an intent statement and a menu. We've listed those options. Say we listed six. Next year, you're going to come in with a seventh way of doing it. It's not in the guideline spelled out. So then we move the conversation up to the intent statement. Are you meeting the intent? And if you can demonstrate that, then there's the administrative ability to approve it under that sequence. Then there is still the PAD option that if, if we just, we can't see how within the existing framework that we can approve what you're suggesting, then you have to move to that, to that level. But ideally, with these refinements, you are going to be reducing the need for the PAD. And they'll be easier and faster to do because in many cases, you'll just be able to reference the guidelines to cover a lot of things that a PAD would normally have to custom tailor because they're going to be here. So those are the kind of levels of flexibility that we see being built in here.
The other piece to that that is very refreshing, I think, is the general plan also talks about intent statements. So we have very clear direction, not only from our 30,000-foot directive document, but then also to the guideline itself, which will keep reinforcing and bringing down just one more level, all the way to the menus, what the options are with that objective.
I'm really glad you asked that because in reading the full draft with all the red lines of the existing guidelines, you'll, in some cases, you may say, well, why are we bothering with these intent statements? Well, that's exactly why we're putting them in there.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So these were some of the things we found and we've already covered, we'll be able to move quickly through some of the later slides. That the four-sided design was an issue, the clarification about tree standards. There is a standard that says there should be along the perimeter of a commercial property, a tree for every 25 or 30 feet, depending on which document you read. But nonetheless, some people have interpreted to mean evenly spaced, which isn't the requirement. And so that, that was an easy one to catch, but, but it just meant that over that entire length, you need to have that many trees, but they can be grouped in different places. That related to a concern about visibility of signs, that in some cases, this uniform canopy of trees was blocking signs. Well, as a developer, I could plan, my planting plan, to locate those trees such that I can assure view corridors into the development to see the, to see the signage. So a minor one, but maybe big implications for some of the concerns that people had.
No? Oh, I'm sorry.
Just to jump in because that case, in some cases, the ordinance indicates so many trees every 25 feet. So it's a conflict between the guidelines and the zoning ordinance.
Yes.
So we need to go back and qualify or make some changes in the ordinance after we finish the guidelines.
And you will see that in that matrix that was alluded to earlier. There were a few of the concerns raised by council that are in fact zoning code issues, not, they're not addressed in the design guidelines. And that matrix identifies those. So that we wanted to record that we did look at it, we know it's an issue, but that's on a to-do next list, if you will.
A good example of one of those, and I apologize, would be the Perks and Rec integration into the general plan and then into the design guidelines. So the design guidelines will designate open space. And again, we're getting more towards the high and dry, how much of the actual open space is usable and functional. And then as we amend the zoning ordinance, we'll be more prescriptive as to the quantity. So we'll have quality in the design guidelines and then quantity in the zoning ordinance as we revise that.
Well, we've already touched on the topics of this slide, which is the desire to enhance predict-
No.
Oh, pardon.
Sorry. Well, we're on the subject of trees and open space. So I, the, so Sherry, what you're saying is, in the, this matrix on the first page, you guys talked about consider increasing the open space requirements. Is that something that needs to take place in this document and in the zoning changes? Is that what you're saying, that we're going to address it in both?
Correct. You are spot on with that. So this will recommend additional open space. The zoning ordinance will specify how much and the quality of the elements within the space itself.
Okay. And then on the trees, I noticed on page four of the matrix, box 34, if anyone's tracking along with that. Owners have planted more than the minimum requirement, sometimes in exchange for avoiding additional architectural design. Do we address that in this new design? I'm, these trees and plantings are causing us a lot of second and third order effect when it comes to our existing businesses and their signage issues and whatnot, that, while I understand the concept, are we not allowing this to happen anymore? Because this sounds like an administrative function as well.
And along with that, could you, did I just interject? Are we going to have them do groupings of plants and trees? Because that's more of a picture being drawn, rather than a tree and then a plant and another plant, that space in between. So those would be more inviting to stand under or be around. So are we, are we going to define that?
Mayor, councilmembers, so that is precisely on point with our objective with the design guidelines. In the past, because we had a rather unspecific guideline, staff did not feel the freedom to be directive to the development community about what our intent was. And so now we have very clear intent that we want to create groupings of trees, view corridors onto open spaces, welcoming lush landscape areas in the appropriate place within the development for long-term maintenance. And so, yes, the answer is that is specifically the intent of this element and that will be communicated to the development community.
Joanne?
Okay. So back to, when we're speaking of open space, we're not necessarily speaking of residential areas, right? We're speaking of commercial, industrial areas like that. So if you, if you have, you know, 10 acres of land and you're plopping this development on there, and we're saying that the open space requirement is increasing, so your building is shrinking, are we going to be making developers stick with the same parking standards? Because this all comes into play together, if they're requiring more open space, can they have less parking? You know, the tree, the tree thing is a great thing that we're changing and I appreciate that. And, you know, if it's, even if it's something where you're saying the trees are aligned sidewalks to take the pedestrians to the fronts of these areas, great, you know, I have no problem with that, I think this is all good. But I am thinking of at 10 acres, what does that change for the whole development of that site?
Right. So I think it's important to note that, not unlike the tree discussion where we're saying same number of trees, just put them in a different configuration, much the same with the open space. So there may not be any less building area, but the open spaces, rather than being pocket parks, for example, in a residential, might be one five-acre more community park level than individual open spaces throughout. So more efficient, effective use of the open space within the development.
Okay, but that's residential. Now, now give me an idea about commercial, industrial.
Yeah, for example, in the commercial areas, we talk about the side layout. The parking will still be the same, it's just the way you, you lay out the site planning. And the only intent of this also, the change is to be able to create the people space, but parking is still required. It's hard to locate the, the open space and the pedestrian circulation on site. That's the area that we need to improve. But, and I put in the trees every 25 feet, but put in the people where the people's supposed to be, and to create the view corridors.
No, and I understand that. I'm, I'm going back to the open space part because you're taking a percentage from somewhere. So that's what's-
Often it would not result in additional open space, just a clustering of the open space on the site.
Okay. So you're not changing the percentage.
Right. And unfortunate piece two of the development process in the past has resulted in the developer choosing as well to add additional parking requirements above and beyond the standard. And in that case as well, we do have the ability now to say, you have met your criteria, we'd prefer that you stay at the parking guideline.
That's good. Bill?
On that parking lot design, page four, box 31, parking areas should have fewer tree islands and curves to allow free flow from aisle to aisle. I don't know where that necessarily came from. Personally, I object to that. I think we should leave our parking with the blocked and add the trees in the center of the way that it-
Need that shade.
That it is, yeah. Not only for shade, but there are some other parking lots in the immediate area here that are absolutely impossible to try to navigate, even though they're all wide open.
You're talking about Walmart?
No, I'm just speaking in generic terms. Sometimes, not always in our own city. But, so I'm not, I'm not sure where that came through. I'm, that would be a concern of mine while we're on the subject of parking lots. And the other thing that I noticed while we're on that topic, that I did not see was the fix to the McDonald's and the Dutch Brothers situations that we have that allow the commercials within the parking lots. I didn't see that anywhere in the design, and I'm not sure if that's a design issue or if that's a zoning issue.
Well, first of all, let, let me ask you, is, is that, because I, there's two, is that a bad thing? See, so, because he objects to it, I look at it, is it, it's exciting, it makes people say, oh my God, what's there? It draws people to the shopping center when you have a little more activity in there rather than just something sitting out there on the lawn, you hardly see it. But I understand, because I saw the congestion, but it was free coffee.
It's been like that every day since it's been open.
But both of those, and the one in Peoria has the same thing. It's all by, but you know what it does for me? I couldn't wait to taste a cup of Dutch coffee. And I kept saying, finally, I, we were taking one of our trips, I said, Rob, pull in there, we're going to get a Dutch coffee before we go, I got to taste this. So it, you know, there is a, there's a fine point between, in my view, of excitement and getting people to want to come into something and then just making it so easy and never have lineups and just say, aren't we, oh boy, aren't we the best planners? One person can be up there, no crowds, no waiting, no nothing. I'm not sure that that is exciting and causes interest. You may get tired of standing in line, but you'll adjust your schedule so you won't have to stand in line and go to a time that's not going to be that way. But that's, so you have two thoughts there.
That's certainly what retailers will tell you in a conventional, excuse me, Main Street context, is a little bit of congestion is a good sign. You know, that's a, that's a sign of good business.
Joe?
Well, you know, I'm going to, on that note, though, it's a good sign for that business, but it is not good for everyone else around there. I've talked to the dry cleaners right across from there, the haircut place and the bank, and they're all a little cranked up about the congestion in that parking lot right now. And I realize we're a month into the business being open, but if the activity, and I'm going to use Dutch Brothers as a very specific example, if the activity in Peoria is, is indicative of the activity that we're going to see, that problem is not going away.
Well, a certain amount of that will be more site engineering and traffic design than the design guidelines can handle. We are developing a series of study sketches of drive-through alternative layouts to discuss some of the pros and cons. That'll be another appendix.
But I'm just going to add one more thing with that shopping center is, those people have wanted A-frames, they want to put the signs on there because they say nobody can see them from the street. So now, we're forcing traffic in there that has a view as they go around, and now we're giving them the spotlight. So again, there is that difference, and I guess there's a happy medium.
I agree.
And maybe we just haven't met that, but, but that's-
I wanted to respond to Councilmember Osburn's-
Yes.
-earlier question about the open space. And Sherry's correct, that a part of it is rearranging and enhancing the quality of the amount of open space that already exists, thinking about it better. One of the new illustrations that we've introduced in the main body of the, of the big document itself is, which you can't see, but it's on-
Turn this over.
Oh. Did you see that?
We can use it. Is it on page nine?
This is page six of 57 in the commercial, chapter four. I think we use it in a variety of ways, but let's see what happens if-
Turn the-
Do what? Turn Elmo up.
Yeah, there you go. The other.
Oh. Okay. All right. So let me see, how does that work for you? It's this sketch. It's upside down, okay.
Yes, very good.
All right. And then can we enlarge it? What, one of the things that we looked at is, there's some beautiful, high-quality open space outside the walls of the commercial centers in 30-foot drainage area, beautiful landscaping. That, wouldn't it be nice in some cases if those walls opened up and that, you created your open space, you made use of space, you've already created outside that line. And so that's what this sketch is showing, is the idea, and here, you know, we know it's not water most of the time, but for the computer generator, we, we have to show it as water, but it's a swale, you understand. Yes.
This is Arizona. We get it.
Right.
It's a teaser.
But the idea is that all of this could become positive open space. And, and we're not increasing any of the, any of it, we're just rethinking it.
And that's fine. That's fine.
And-
Back to Bill's-
And what we've also suggested is that these trees could have come from some of those locations in those required traffic islands and been reclustered here, as the mayor suggested. So that's the idea there. Everyone wins, you get a better deal out of it.
Okay. Yes, yes. Oh.
I just want to ask the council to consider, when you're talking about trees, and I understand the problem, because I've driven by a shopping center and said, where is that, you know, X-story that I'm looking for? I can't see it because there's trees everywhere. So I understand that problem. But in this climate, heat gain is one of our biggest problems. And if you take trees away from black asphalt, which soaks up the most heat and radiates it out, then you make that, that shopping center, that, that office park a worse place to walk across. And it's hard enough to walk down a sidewalk in July, let alone if there's no shade there. And I think there's other solutions than clumping all the landscape into areas that you can do with signage and, and different things like that. So please just keep that in mind.
There's definitely an interaction, and I don't think we want to imply that we're suggesting all the trees be clumped into one location by any means. And you're absolutely right. The amount of trees shading the parking lots here, I appreciate very, very much. And we don't want to see that.
Joanne?
Okay, well, that, I guess that's what I was, on what Bill was saying, of having the trees out of the parking lot. You're 100% correct. I mean, especially for the customer. And I'm a retailer and I can tell you, that's what retailers want, is they're thinking of their customer. And so having shaded areas for their cars sitting out there, for walking through the area, we want to have those trees. If, they don't have to be aligned on the perimeter, but within the parking areas, I 100% go past it. And back to the Dutch Brothers issue, quite frankly, you know what? As a retailer, I might bitch moan about no parking places, but if we allow for the point of saying, H&R Block is here, 123 parking places, and, you know, Dutch Brothers has 123 parking places over here, and whatever has 12, we need to be flexible for that because that's a great problem to have, to, you know, have to say, these are my spots, you know? But I would much rather have that issue than no traffic.
We have here. Bill?
Well, just, just for a point of clarity, the thing that, I wasn't talking about objecting to the Dutch Brothers scenario. It was the-
It was all right what you said, Bill, though. I wasn't really-
It was the exchange, yeah, it was the exchange of trees and parking that-
Right. And, and just to help with some discussion, item number 31, really the idea of- And just to help with some discussion, item number 31, really, the idea of the concept would be to include additional text in illustrations in our examples that allow them to see different ways to configure the trees and the parking islands, not necessarily to eliminate, just not do the traditional straight-line separation between the parking and the building.
Joe?
I wanna beat a dead horse, but I shop at Dutch Brothers, I like it. The problem I have with it is the traffic flow. I almost saw somebody get hit trying to back out of the parking spaces as a result of the line to get into it. And this was after the, the one day, the free coffee was a madhouse, you couldn't even get across there. This is just the routine, because what it does is the circle goes around, and if there's enough cars in there, it covers up parking spaces and also may cover up people backing out. Alls I'm asking is, when you design those, take a closer look, what historically, what the demand may be, so it doesn't block people in who may be parked there, and, yeah, that's my biggest concern with that. But again, great product, been there, like it.
I think we need to move on here, Ron, just watching the time now. So anything yet, oh, Sherry?
Different areas, is that okay?
Tell them the area, and let's see if they're gonna cover it.
I'll just wait, and then...
Well, what is the area?
Well, I had a couple questions, one was about the ornamental lighting in there.
So, are we gonna get you on ornament lighting, or is this...
Or should I just send those to you later? Would that be better? My questions?
No, I don't want you to stop discussion. I just didn't know if it's in the presentation coming out.
Yeah, that's ones I have, none of the ones I have are in the presentation.
Put it out there.
I'll be very quick, I got three quick questions. One was the ornamental lighting. I just wanna make sure that when we do the guidelines, because those are a great feature, that we're very clear on that issue. The other was the solar panels. I'll just list them, and then you can respond to them all, so kinda for save time. The, and I'm not an engineer, I just know when we looked for solar for our house, it was gonna have to be way up, and I didn't do it because it was so hideous looking. So I don't know if technology has changed, or, but that's a concern, I don't want people not to have solar because of that.
I have that same concern, because we have a house in Pebble Creek, you come into it, it's right at the gate, and you can see that. And I talked to the installer of that house, and he told me the circumstances, this is the only way they could bring solar to their house. So I saw the same picture, and I saw the same statement, I was concerned. Anybody else concerned about that?
All right. So let's start with the ornamental lighting. In many cases, that is dictated by the PAD that's been adopted by the development, so it's a design standard of the development. And so the design guidelines would dictate that use in that case, so we're covered with that. With the solar panels, the intent was really to encourage the development community and or the resident to consider different types of solar installations which might minimize the impact visually on the development. And that's really, it's a guideline to encourage.
It's not a demand.
It's not a demand or elimination in any way, restriction.
Sherry, on the ornamental light, are we talking about the PAD for the entire development, correct?
Correct.
So will we, will that avoid the current situation we have going on with up in Estrella?
Correct. So if a developer delineates a specific type of lighting pool use, and they install that in their development, that is what is dictated going forward.
And who's gonna pay for what part will all be dictated in the beginning instead of five or 25 years later?
Actually, that typically is covered in the HOA standards, which we will ensure that we have that covered moving forward.
Yeah, thanks.
But I think we're all happy about that. Go ahead.
Well, I think we can move through several of these, because we've wandered over quite a few of them. These are some of the techniques.
We have a tendency to do that, I'm sorry.
No, it's, it's fine, it's great. But you will see in the draft, and in some cases, we've just inserted additional text, trying to, in some cases, list things more as bullets rather than in narrative form, make it easier to read, inserting more imagery into the main document, but then certainly into the, into the appendices, where it's easier to do that, and adding some charts and tables. Flexibility, we've already touched on how we suggested doing that, so we can skip over that. The intense statements, here's an example of one of those, and then the, some other examples of intense statements, this one, there has been a question about signage, and most of the signage is in the code and not a part of this project.
I have to take you back, I'm sorry, because I guess this is where it would come under. Through this whole reading, I did not see anything about ballpark. And it's my view that we should have a ballpark, or I would like you at least to discuss that, an, a ballpark overlay, a specific area plan with architecture and uses. And we talk about a different neighborhood, and could have different architect and different materials, because it's, it's two stadiums, I mean, training areas and a stadium, so it calls for something not ho-hum and not normal, but I don't think we can get it unless we have a ballpark overlay.
Yeah, so we, I heard that comment last time, and we have introduced a little bit of language, it's in the introduction to the appendix on building materials, that begins to discuss that there are certain contexts that, where the degree of continuity or diversity of materials could change, and it does specifically suggest in the ballpark area, a more industrial, high-tech character would be appropriate.
So, Mayor, the intent, again, if we think about our hierarchy of documents, so the general plan calling out the different types of uses that we wanna see at the ballpark, and then the design guidelines talking about the diversity of materials which are appropriate and covered in this appendix area, but then also points in several places throughout the document to those areas such as the Estrella Boulevard area, where we have an overlay today, City Center, or in the case of the ballpark, if we wanted to create an overlay district, the guidelines would point to that overlay, and would not in any instance trump. The overlay trumps because it's a zoning that is tied to the property. And so, for example, today, we have zoning on the ballpark site that allows for certain densities and heights and dictates certain materials at a very basic level. As we move forward, then, with additional zoning on the site, we will call out through the PAD those design elements which are important to the community.
I see it right here where I missed it, sorry about that.
Excellent question.
I appreciate you reassuring me. Thank you.
No, and the only ones that we had enough information to call out a special had to do with historic Goodyear, and with the ballpark area, and a little bit of the mixed-use corridors, those are the ones in that introduction that we called out a little bit differently. But there's room there as through the general plan or specific plan process, goals for other sub-areas are identified where there might be a little bit of difference in the architecture, that's where that could be introduced.
Okay, good. And not only in the commercial, certainly, but also in residential, potentially, as we move from, you know, traditional southwestern, we may find other products that we think are compatible with the community.
Good.
So then, just real quickly, because we've already touched on these, but the idea of these appendices is they are really visual menus to try to show a range of diversity of design solutions and a variety of design topics. And there's some discussion up front in the introduction that talks about the interaction of some of the primary design variables that are fundamental to the document. That's massing, materials, color, landscaping. Those are the ones that, the closer you are to being similar with materials, then maybe you can be a little bit more diverse with your massing. Or the closer you are in colors to the traditions, then maybe you can be a little bit more diverse in your materials. And that plays into the way these charts are set up. This one's about public art, but the others, this...
Can you go back to that, please? While we're on the subject of public art?
Yes, go.
I'm gonna, in typical fashion, you're gonna contradict myself? But I am gonna ask the question about, we're, I think one of the things that I heard from everyone on council was, we would really like to see some way for us to encourage this public art. And as I was reading through this, while I object to using it as a trade-off in, you know, trees for something else, what came to me was, is there a, is there a, is there a function allowed within this that we can start to utilize a trade-off to allow public art in lieu of, I don't know, I don't know what that is.
Mayor, councilmember Stip, so I believe later this month, you'll be seeing a proposal for art in public spaces that is primarily a public art component, and several elements of that are really dictated by the valuation and the size and the type of project. Those are really the criteria we're evaluating, and you will also have consideration to find appropriate or find to adjust. So this case is really about integrating the art in terms of a component of the site. The design guideline does not allow for trade-offs. The, the art in public spaces document that we've been coordinating with Parks and Recreation is really about stipulating the need for and requiring a certain investment, if you will, in art within a project. So they're compatible, but they're not dictated, the guideline to the art and private development, so, little bit different. The art and private development will stipulate the amount that should be invested in public art and what types of art are appropriate. The design guideline talks about where on the site it might be appropriate and how it's integrated onto the site and the building.
And I would say that the one area is, if you look at this lower row here, those are decorated wall surfaces using public art. And so, under the objective of having four-sided designs that have visually interesting side walls, but it's not a wall where I can have a store, that is an option, that is a menu option. So there, it is, it's not necessarily a trade-off, but it is one of the ways that you can meet the guideline. So that leads us into the four-sided wall design, and I'll go through this real quickly. What we're trying to do, I mentioned earlier, is set up these criteria. The highly pedestrian-oriented business end of a building is a type A, high degree of storefront is expected there. Type B diminishes, but still has some glass windows or openings, banks, for example, might have a lot of B-type walls on them, or buildings that have a secondary facade, but they are internal to a project where people are walking by at a lot. And then the C-type is that conventional backside, but again, we, not a backside ever, but these are still decorated, but diminishing in the amount of treatment and the degree of variation in materials, et cetera, that's expected. And then, that is then made even a little bit more objective in this checklist, and I'll just touch on it real quickly. This takes those three wall types, A, B, and C, and then this, this picture cuts off the chart, but those five design variables of massing and materials and color and landscaping, et cetera, are listed down there. And then it is suggested that if you're an A-type, for example, you should be meeting, you should be three out of the five choices under category one of massing, if you're an A-type wall. If you're a B-type wall, you should be meeting two of those, and if you're a C-type, one of those. So it's giving a certain rational degree for staff to follow, how much to require or expect of a certain wall design, and then that follows through for the other materials as well. So it's still flexible, it's not a specified standard. And we certainly heard from the development community that they didn't want it to be a standard, they wanted it to be, they still wanted the choice, but they wanted clarity. So this balances that thinking. And so then, same thing with color, then again, the matrices for materials, showing a wide range of materials options that are available, and discussing them as primary, secondary, and accent materials.
I'm gonna just say one thing, on that picture, that second brick to the right, I think that's the famous brick, brick that we're talking about.
It looks familiar.
Looks very familiar. Could I possibly, with the acceptance of the council, put a different sample up there?
Well...
Which one are you talking about?
Okay, it looks like the one that we don't like, that's on Stella Parkway.
Or, could we edit it, rather than being a primary material, to say that's a secondary or an accent material, to diminish the amount to which it could be used?
Not a four-sided material.
I'm not gonna make any commitment here. It's just I want you to look into that, because that really is...
All right.
Yes.
That's not one of the good year buildings, that's everybody's. Understood.
Understood.
Okay.
But in any case, the idea here is that sort of all of the spectral materials is presented, then there's the guidance about in which sub-area is that appropriate as a primary versus a secondary or an accent material. So the metal is here, but only as a primary material in certain designated areas, is the idea. And so that's what that whole series is about, of those, those pictures. And then there's a similar thought process to color. Oh, I'm sorry.
Cheryl Lynn has a question.
And I just would like to comment on the fact that I really would encourage the use of these pictures and samples. You can't put enough, too, in my opinion, you can't put too many of them in, because it really is helpful, especially for the less sophisticated people that are coming to our city to build something in our city. I just think this is very, very good.
Thank you, councilmember. I'm the bad guy who took out 10 other picture slides to my tonight work, so my apologies.
But in any case, there are a lot in those appendices, and we see them as being used very much, very heavily. They'll be, they'll be key tools. Same rationale with color, introducing the idea of primary, secondary, and accent.
Not that we want color.
Well, but, and there is text that does discuss the fact that the palette of the Sonoran Desert is in fact hotter than three shades of tan, but...
It can be.
But, but at the same time, again, not wanting to throw the baby out with the bathwater, but there is a certain, you know, fundamental base palette here that still needs to be respected.
Nori, Nori had a really excellent point, which had been raised by council previously, that the use of corporate logos and colors is really helpful in an accent piece on a building, but perhaps not the primary driver of a building, for reasons not unlike what you've raised earlier. What if the building changes owner, and there's a new use? We want the building to be functional and sustainable into the future in its design and materials, but the color might change. And so using the corporate logos and their colors in an accent feature is really a more appropriate use going forward, such as we've seen with the change that occurred over the last few weeks with the Burger King on Litchfield Road. Significant change in color palette, materials, but still functional moving forward.
Nice.
Good. I think, so anyway, you, again, showing different examples of primary, secondary, and accent color use, and then a similar series of examples for public open space and pedestrians, and this is, again, trying to drive home that fact that we wanna look more at the quality and the function of these spaces. They don't have to be large necessarily, but planned and located where people will use them, and not just the leftover space in a parking lot.
Joanna?
I know it's not gonna be in the design guidelines, I'm assuming it's within ordinances. Is there a square footage for a project that has to have those public areas?
There is. So our zoning ordinance requires a minimum of 15% open space across a commercial project or usually a residential project, and so that's where the discretion comes in. Quite frequently, our projects are well over 20, and in some cases in residential, 30% to 40% open space. So in each of our zoning cases, you'll see a line stipulating the required open space in that which has been dictated.
Okay.
Yeah, Mayor, also, just to add to the discussion, in this case, I will mention earlier, in the minute, is the side layout. Doesn't have to be an escapement, but also hardscape to create the openness rate for people. In some cases, that's what we're missing in some places here in Goodyear. We have nice buildings, but need to integrate between buildings and space, something, example like that. We can do something for children to play, like a splash fountain, and that could be between two buildings.
Well, it's kinda like a verado, you know, smaller, but in verado, they have little alleyways coming into the city, and they have them decorated, and maybe a bench in there, and they're just very kinda cubby holes, very comfortable, kinda good way.
I think piano is what I think.
Yeah, and have your own private conversation, so yeah, very good.
Yeah, something like that, because also during the pre-application process, we can communicate to the applicant, developers, architects, that you can integrate those spaces between buildings. Doesn't have to be all parking or hardscape, can be some people place.
Mayor, yeah, I'm glad you raised that, because that's something I've been thinking about, you know, the last couple years or so, just how dominant we are by parking lots, and, you know, and I know we're a car, you know, a car society, and I drive a big truck, and I appreciate having nice, white, open, you know, parking spaces, but at the same time, it's not very inviting, you know, to have a community dominated by asphalt, so I'm glad that that's something you guys are contemplating.
Yes.
It's really about creating that sense of place beyond just the built environment.
That's a good comment, I agree with that. Yes, Sherry?
I agree, and also when we talk about someone that's building the homes, I like some of the things that we don't want, homes with just all garages. When you bring up verado, that's a good example, where they've kinda done the old Craftsman, where they put the garage in the back, so I like your section on talking about that as well.
And those are the last two images here out of the, out of the appendices. One is about porches and entrances. The objective, the intent being to connect to the street, to be a good neighbor, and to have an opportunity to engage with neighbors. Porches are one way of doing it. This is offering a variety of options for how you define those entries, and then similarly, a menu of garage designs, including three-car garage design in the upper-left corner, which is permitted under the... upper-left corner, which is permitted under the, uh, but that was one of those things where that wasn't clear, and so now that picture will be there, people will understand that, but showing the different garage options, including the detached rear, uh, garage. So, the last part, who wants to talk about schedule here?
Well, I think I just wanted to wrap up a little bit with, uh, reiterating, council was asking us to be flexible. We wanted to maintain the Goodyear character, we wanted that uniqueness of sense of place and community, and we wanted quality, and, uh, that was our objective. And while we have a rather aggressive next steps in our, our schedule here, we want council to tell us and P and Z to tell us, have we hit the mark? Are there things that we need to go back and work on, and can we get there, you know, in a timely manner so that we can get these things, uh, going in our future projects?
Any comments?
None? I have one question.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, the, the one question that I do have is going to be the discussion of signage.
Yes, my apologies, councilmembers, I did mean to cover that, thank you. Uh, so, under the design guideline format, uh, when we talk about site layout and intending to reduce the number of P A Ds, really, these guidelines are intended that we would go back to the zoning ordinance and incorporate the sign elements that we have discussed previously that had been incorporated as a temporary measure. We would come back to you in the next couple of weeks after we complete the city council step of the design guidelines, and come through with the zoning ordinance changes on the sign ordinance, incorporating A-frame signs, banners, grand opening signs, some of the elements that we've heard consistently from the open houses that the development community wanted. What the design guideline provides us is the flexibility in size, color, and location of signs, to make those changes in the zoning ordinance, such that we can be flexible and accommodate corporate logos, differing locations, multiple monument signs, things of that nature. So, this lays the framework to change the zoning ordinance and the sign ordinance.
Okay, and then, then one last one, um, so we'll be going back on that. One last one is on P A Ds. So, we currently, um, without going into issues of discussing a case in front of us, but we have, we have a, a case for a residential P A D item that, um, I guess is a new concept, and where P A Ds, we want to allow flexibility, we want to allow for new concepts, things like that, but there's a point that we also look at things that say, you know what, this is new, this is, this is cool, but you're missing some of the items that are forced upon other residential areas. How do we address that? And maybe that, and maybe that's a difficult discussion right now, because we are having that issue right now. So, I, Rourke's not here. So, I don't know. Oh, there he is, I'm sorry. So, I don't, I don't wanna...
He's always here. Mayor, councilmembers, if I might, uh, I think the council and Planning and Zoning Commission did an excellent job, for example, with the Cluster Home project that you considered just a few months back, along I-10, of really digging in and, uh, you know, drawing a line, and saying, we think staff's done a good job, we think the developer's done some, but we'd like you to go back and consider more.
Okay.
And so, that process worked just as it should. Um, what we get out of the design guideline tune-up is really much clearer direction. From the menus, we can say to that developer, well, you've met these three, but you've only got one from this category. You can try to take your case to council and see if that's gonna work, but it'll be very obvious to them that from the menu, they probably have not achieved all those design objectives that we wish them to.
Right, thank you.
Then, one more question, this probably shouldn't be brought up here, but, uh, as we've progressed as a city, uh, we've observed some areas that we developed that probably weren't, um, didn't, uh, didn't help businesses progress, uh, because the entrance to the businesses are behind, um, and there's really no way for them to really do much advertising on the front. We've covered them up with trees, and I'll just use the example on Pebble Creek Parkway, uh, the one there with, uh, Cavanaugh Realty and some of those, that one is a good example of that, a very hard for business, you're surprised I used that name, or, uh, very hard for businesses to, you know, to attract. And so, I know we're, we're working on new, but I would hope that we would have a program that we would look through the city at businesses that have been established for a long time that really need a change, so that they're more visible to the public and to, and to business. So, whether that's a monument sign, whether that's the color in the front, whatever, so are we looking at that in the future?
Mayor, that is an excellent point. So, we do have an outreach strategy, once we get beyond the P and Z and the council approvals, to get out in the community and, and go talk with the chamber, and have lunch with some of our development community, and talk to our brokerage community. Uh, but this guideline does that first and foremost. It allows us, from a staff level potentially even, to have flexibility to allow some changes of greater, larger-size monument signs, or more number of monument-sized signs, or to redo the parking lot into a more, you know, greening type of environment than a restrictive type of...
And we have one on McDowell, we have several of those places, that, uh, one on Litchfield, as I remember, that the way, I mean, and the concept was great, it looks just absolutely wonderful, but for the businessman, it does have its shortcomings, so...
Excellent point, and this allows the flexibility on a staff level to achieve many of those changes.
Great. All right. Is, is there any more? Well, we just wanna thank you for the presentation and the information.
Thank you.
And, um, thank you for bearing with us, council. We're, we're, uh, we're interrupters, and we, uh, like to ask a lot of questions.
Love it.
And when they leave, they wanna feel like they've had their say, and, and that. Has everybody had their say?
I'd like to thank P and Z for being here.
Great, would you please do that, thank you. And, uh, Randy, thank you for your comments, thank you for your comments, Ryan, uh, we appreciate that. And anything else that you get in the car and go home tonight and say, oh, I wish I had said that, would you just send an email to Sherry? Uh, and, 'cause sometimes in this kind of, and we're very loud and forceful, so we, we don't promote, we're all speaking up out of, so please do that, okay? All right, I'm, I'm going to adjourn this one, and I'm, I'm questioning about the second meeting, but I'll ask after I adjourn this meeting.
Take a break. She can't get in for two minutes, or ten minutes, 'cause you're looking at...
I think that's a little slow.
Need a break, I know, so take a break.
Coming back next week, okay? Don't bring us a bowl to sit here.
All right. We're gonna reconvene the work session to finish up on, uh, item 3.1, a presentation on the city status as a CDBG entitlement community, the process for becoming an entitlement community grantee, and options for the future participation in the CDBG program. Katie Wilken, planner three, to present. Katie?
Thank you, mayor and council. Um, this is a work session item, but we are seeking direction from you tonight. Um, we need some kind of consensus on which way we should go, so that Brian can officially inform HUD and Maricopa County of our decision. Um, if we do decide to become entitlement community, we'll move down that path. If we decide to stay with the urban county, this summer, you'll be seeing a three-year cooperative agreement to act upon. And I will, in the interest of time, you've received a lengthy yellow paper on this topic, be a little brief in my presentation, but please just stop me at any time if you need more explanation. Um, so, for the interest of the public, the purpose of the CDBG program is to assist low and moderate-income persons in areas of a community. And there's two ways we participate in this program. Um, the first way is how we do today, um, we participate in a state-administered program. Maricopa County runs an urban county program, so the money goes through them. It's a competitive grant application process. There's a community development advisory committee that recommends to the board of supervisors, and council member Homan is our representative on that committee, council member Campbell is our alternate, and council members Osborne and Stips have also served on that committee in the past. Um, and this is a list of the other members of the CDAC that are in the urban county with us. The other way we can participate is the entitlement community program, and that's where a community receives a direct allocation from HUD. You must be informally invited to participate in that program. We, this is our third time being invited, um, and so, we can continue with the program as is, or we can become an entitlement community, and there is a misprint. Our current agreement expires in June 2015. The next agreement would be 2018.
Am I gonna jump on this, if I say, if I ask you, uh, you're just gonna show the positives or negatives of, of joining invited by...
Yeah, just kinda go through the pros and cons.
I wanna ask that question, go ahead.
So, again, the two options are to decline entitlement status and stay with the urban county, or to accept entitlement status and run our own program. So, I'm just gonna go through some of the considerations as we do this. So, the first is funding. This is the last nine years, um, of awards we've received through the urban county program, and you can see the average of all those is $256,000. If you just look at the last three years, the average is $274,000, and so, just as a side note, that really tells us, um, the last time we declined entitlement really was a great decision by city council, because we had heard then our, um, funding would have been about $205,000. So, we did, um, much better with the county this, um, last three years. If you look at the average of just the awards, it's about $384,000. Now, under entitlement, um, we've been told that estimated allocation is $293,000. Um, that's based on this year funds, so it could go up a little, because we're a fast-growing community, but there's also a proposal to cut the CDBG program by eight percent across the board, so it's also likely to go down. But, our estimate we have in hand right now is 293,000. Um, we're allowed to use 20 percent for administration, and basically, the, um, you know, sometimes it's disappointing to see we would receive such a low allocation, but it's actually really good news, because the way they figure out how much you would receive is not just based on population, but, um, poverty, overcrowding, age of housing stock. So, what this is really saying is that Goodyear's in really good shape. It doesn't mean we don't have any need, but, um, compared to some other communities of similar sizes, um, we don't have the challenges that they do, so it's, it's a really positive, um, aspect. So, kind of looking at the next three years, what our funding would be, if we got funding, how we have in the past with the urban county, we could estimate about $750,000 to $820,000 in funding over the next three years. Entitlement, as I said before, it's kind of a guessing game with the federal budget, but, um, I would estimate about $900,000, but if we used all the administration money, that would leave about $720,000 for projects. So, again, there's a potential for more money with the urban county, but there's no guarantee. If we look at the types and projects and programs, there's a whole host of programs that are eligible. Basically, if you're, um, working in low and moderate-income areas or providing people with jobs, it's probably an eligible project. Um, this is the past projects...
So, where, where are we, where is Goodyear in that?
What are you, I'm sorry?
Okay, what'd you say, the income, where was the...
Oh, the type of projects have to serve low and moderate-income areas.
And, and so, do we...
So, the project would be things like...
Do we have a lot of low and moderate areas?
We actually don't. There's very few areas...
Okay, that's all my question, that's, I just wanted to answer that part. Juan?
Thank you. So, the type of projects, um, we've done over the last nine years in the urban county, mostly capital projects, but we, um, did see a really positive note this year, that there was a lot of support for the facade improvement program that we brought forward. Um, that's not something we've seen in the past, so it, it's really great to see that they are supporting maybe economic development-type projects, more public service projects, um, so that's something to keep in mind. Now, of course, on the entitlement side, we would have full control, we would use the community's input to choose projects, but the council would be the final decision-maker on the types of projects.
So, they have to be low and moderate?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or, there's also other types of projects, they're called direct benefits, so ADA improvements, no matter where they are, it's eligible.
Okay, so we get some ADA, but low and moderate...
Yeah, senior services are always eligible.
You said that was that, low and moderate?
Yeah.
Okay, so all we get out of this is a few ADA, which we probably could do on the other. I'm just trying to question this, that's, 'cause...
And some seniors.
Yeah, I'm just trying to balance it out. Okay, go ahead.
Wait. Sharon's got a question.
Well, I, I don't think that's quite an accurate statement, though, because just like, um, this year, we used it for the facade improvements, which is for business.
I'm talking only about entitlement, we're having, if we can become entitlement, is that...
Well, but, if, basically, the types of projects that are eligible is the same in the urban county or the entitlement program.
And we're in what now, so I'm making sure...
The whole community becomes an entitlement community, so we just have to prove that it's serving low-to-moderate-income people.
What are we now?
We're in the urban county program.
Okay, we're in urban.
Yeah.
And we're looking at to become an entitlement. I'm just trying to point out, to make sure in the end, that we know what we can get and what we can't get, because we don't really have the demographics for the entitlement to get a lot of things...
Right.
Because we don't have the need. But the urban, we seem to be able to manage money well, that's all I'm...
No, thank you, mayor. I think, yeah, the types of projects, the, the, the need really determines how much money you get. So, that's where the $293,000 comes from. But then, when we look at types and projects and programs, it's basically the same in both programs. So, we could do facade improvement, we could do waterline, we could do housing rehab, we could build a community center. The thing you have to do is, you have to prove it's somehow serving low-to-moderate-income persons, so it needs to be a waterline in historic Goodyear.
Okay, there's my question.
Yeah.
Can we prove that we have low and moderate? That's my question.
Yes. Well, one way is through CD, um, through, sorry, census tracts, there's some that just are automatically eligible, so if the project's in that area, it's checkmark, you're serving low-to-moderate-income people. So, Canada Village, Northern Subdivision, and Mobile are all in low income, so those areas, projects would automatically qualify. Another way to qualify an area, if it doesn't meet it through the census, is to do a survey. So, historic Goodyear actually doesn't qualify through census, but we could do a survey to show that there are low, you know, a certain percentage of low-moderate-income people. Another way to do projects is through a redevelopment area. The money gets a little, there's some rules on the money, how you use it, but that's how we've been using it in the urban county, and we can do that again in the future. So, there are ways, we could get the money spent, is what I'm saying, so...
Bill?
And you said we can use it for ADA projects throughout the entire city, correct?
Thank you, there's some, there's some types of projects that they call it a direct benefit, and it's just saying, because of the type of service, it's fulfilling the purpose of the program. Providing ADA benefits, senior services, those automatically qualify, even if you're doing it in Pebble Creek.
So, it doesn't matter low and moderate?
So, the, the money that we're currently gonna spend on the roadway projects that we approved earlier tonight, some of that funding was for, uh, handicap-accessible, uh, curb and gutter repairs, et cetera. That could be funded through CDBG.
Yes.
Entitlement money that we don't have to go to fight for.
That, that's an eligible project.
There you go.
Thank you.
Well, you're getting, you're getting to the, the time factor and the staffing factor that'll be then deducted from that amount.
Yes, that'll be next.
Yeah, okay.
That'll be next.
Yeah, that's...
I mean, one important thing about that project, though, is, once federal money starts touching a project, the whole entire project has to meet the federal rules. I'm not exactly sure how that particular project is designed, but if it's one construction contract, that whole entire $1.8 million construction contract would then be subject to federal rules, even if only $200,000 is the ADA improvements. That's just, sometimes there's all the strings attached when you use the federal money in those types of projects.
Or how we bid it.
Or you could separate it out, there's ways, you know, to get around that. So, of our $293,000, we can use 20 percent for administration. If we did that, that would leave $235,000 for projects. Um, you can do public service projects, and that's like, you know, supporting a food bank, supporting a senior program, after-school program. You're limited to 15 percent, though, and, um, there's also some other rules associated with it, you can only fund it for one year, it's for expanding programs. Um, there's also a cap on slum and blight. The slum and blight is the money we use in the redevelopment area, and that's limited to 30 percent. So, although we use the redevelopment area to establish that it's a low-mod area, only 30 percent of funds can be used there. We never run into that problem in the county, because they receive $2 million, and our grant application never gets that 30 percent, so we don't have to worry about it. It could become a concern, I don't think it's a huge concern, 'cause there are other ways to prove low-mod. We can do special surveys, it would take a little work, but I don't think that would necessarily be our stumbling block in the entitlement program. However, administration, this is the big one. This is a list of things we do now to administer the CDBG program, and I would estimate it takes about 10 to 20 percent of my time to do these things. It kinda depends on the project. things. It kind of depends on the project. If it's a water line project, I don't have to do a lot because the engineering department is doing all the work, but the facade improvement project is going to take more of my time because there's contracts and liens to issue. But, I do, I just want to take a quick moment here just to point out that I am not the only person, I get the, who administers this program. I'm the one who stands before you, so I always get the accolades. You know, I want Christine's right here, and she's been an absolute help researching this entitlement, but she helps administer the programs, too. And she's also knows a lot about federal programs, so it's always great to have a second set of eyes. Mary Kay in the finance department is a rock star. She's been helping with this program ever since I've been here. I don't think there's ever been so much as a note at one of our audits because she just takes care of everything so perfectly. And, like I said, she doesn't get to stand before you and take credit for the program. And then, of course, in engineering, Tammy Valdez-Paz is designing the project for us so that we don't have to pay funds to design the project, and Troy Tobiasin is going to be administering the program. So, there's just a whole team of people that make these projects happen, and I just wanted to-
That's nice.
-take a quick moment and recognize everybody who works to make these projects successful.
Thank you.
Now, if we did become entitlement, first, there'd be some one-time expenses. We'd have to create a five-year consolidated plan, an annual action plan, and impediments to fair housing analysis. And now, yes, the annual action plan is obviously annually, and the five-year consolidated data plan gets updated every five years. What we've heard from other communities is that you, you really need some help getting the first ones done with a consultant. Then, after that, staff can update it once you have the base done. And the estimates I got was $65,000 to $120,000 to get these documents completed. Now, I did recently, I've been hearing that the federal government is going more and more to electronic, and that's going to drive down the cost, but I haven't got any hard estimates on that. So, we did submit a supplemental for this cost. So, if we do decide to go forward with entitlement, we would need that supplemental in the budget to plan for these costs of getting these documents created.
I just want to know, entitlement, urban. I just want to know, because I've looked at this before, and when I finished briefing me, I said, "I'm not sure it's going to benefit by going entitlement right now." It sounds great, and it's wonderful because all the other cities, but on the small amount of difference in the money, we've done so well, and I still, that moderate, and then, I mean, it still bothers me.
Mayor Katie's almost done, and we've been having this conversation this entire time, which way to go. So, she's almost done.
Okay, I'll shut up.
It's okay. The other thing, this is a list of what would be ongoing, and again, the bottom line is, we've talked to many, many communities who get from $200,000 a year to, you know, $600,000, $800,000 a year, and you need one full-time staff member fully dedicated to this program. It just doesn't matter how much money you get because you have to do all the requirements, no matter how much you get. And so, like I said, right now, I'm doing about 10% to 20% of my time, and so you can see that we would need a full-time person, but we'd only be getting $58,000 for administration. And we have to pay for the salary, trainings, updating plans, copies. I mean, there's more than just the staff salary to pay for with that $58,000. I did the fair housing presentation earlier. That, we're required to do fair housing outreach with CDBG, and right now, we can just say, "Oh, we did a proclamation. I'm going to go to some free training," but you have to show you're spending money on fair housing when you're an entitlement community. So, there's just all sorts of little things that kind of add up when you're doing that. Quickly, the home program. This one's a little easier. The home program, we haven't talked about it a lot lately. It's a housing block grant. It requires cash match. That's how we used to fund our housing rehabilitation program. The county recently took that over, and it's been really successful. We used to only do one or two housing rehabs a year. We've had five residents this past year get assistance with emergency rehab and homebuyer assistance. So, we're serving more people, and we don't have to do any of the administration work. So, it's great. The good news is, we could continue doing that even if we became CDBG entitlement. There, if we, our other option would be to take $67,000. We'd have to put in $17,000. That would only leave $85,000. We really wouldn't be able to do, just as many residents are getting help by the county running the program.
Just keep considering.
So, here's the summary. Here's the urban county versus entitlement. When I look at it, funding, I mean, we have a bigger potential to get a greater amount in the urban county, but there's no guarantee. So, the entitlement program does give you predictability.
Although, there's no guarantee in the federal government either.
They could cut it, but that would affect the urban county, too. On types of projects and programs, entitlement does give you more flexibility. It gives council a little more freedom and flexibility to plan ahead and decide how money's going to be used. On the administration, though, there's definitely a big, a greater burden on the entitlement, and it's much easier in the urban county. On the home, it's the same. So, the way I would summarize this thought is, are we happy with the types of projects and programs we've been able to fund through the urban county program? If we are, then it's probably a good idea to stay with them. However, if there are projects and programs where we're thinking, you know, "I wish we could do this type of project, but the county's just not letting us, or it's just hard to do it through the county," that's when we might say, "Well, maybe entitlement would be a good idea." But, then the question becomes, are we willing to make the administrative investment to be able to do those type of projects over what we've been doing in the county? And so, that's my summary of how to think about it. And so, I'll end my presentation and answer questions.
I'm going to let you, let some other people talk. Yes, Sherilyn?
Well, I've been banner-ing this around for pretty much the last year since I was assigned to the committee. There's no question in my mind that we have a great deal more flexibility in the programs that we can do. However, the price we pay for that is very dear, I think. The amount of work that the county does to make this happen is absolutely astounding. And I, I think if you would say, Sherilyn, you have to tell me right now, what do you want to do, urban or entitlement? I would stay with the urban. But, that's just a gut feeling because of the, when you're dealing with the feds, there are so many requirements and things to watch out for, and it just, in my opinion, it would be very hard for one person to catch every one of them without, with the county, there's a whole lot of people that are doing it. And so, I'm just as torn as everyone else, but I think if that, if you were to ask me right now, say, "Yes or no," and we don't have a lot of time because the answer has to be given by the 15th, right?
Yes.
So, that would be what I would say.
Sherilyn, other comments? Look, Councilwoman Lortano?
Please, you go first over this group. Yeah, I was listening and, from going through the information provided, I'm not seeing it, and I might be missing something. I'm not seeing a net gain for us here. And I am concerned about when you say the whole contract, you know, if we miss something and they change those administrative, the President's side's administrative regulations, something's changed, and then we're liable for our entire contract for this maybe $50,000 portion of it changes our whole contract. So, I am concerned about that. I guess I'm not seeing, and if someone can enlighten me, I don't see a net gain for our city by changing that.
Next. Any other comments?
Go ahead, you go.
Councilman Stip?
You know, the, the very first thing that I, that I, that came to me when I went to CDBG meeting was, "This is a colossal waste of human resources on our behalf." Every single month, there's a council member and a staff member that goes down to this meeting, and we sit there in much in the same configuration, a nice U-shape, and I was, shared an analogy, and I've cleaned it up a little bit. Being in that room is like the person in the middle of a blizzard with a heavy jacket on complaining to everybody else with no coat how cold it is. And we're sitting in a room with Guadalupe and Wickenburg that have no resources, that have an absolute need, and we are legitimately taking money away from them in this, in this process. I, while I love the amount of projects that we've gotten done, I listen to the staff from the county say, "You know, you really aren't going to be able to replace sidewalks anymore, and you're not going to be able to do water lines and sewer lines." So, everybody starts to shift and move around. Meanwhile, a town like Guadalupe that is trying to put floor, flooring in homes that have dirt floors, we're taking money out of their, out of their mouths and out of their pockets. That's very frustrating from a social perspective. And if we go entitlement, we're not taking that money away from them anymore. We're getting a different slice of the pie, in theory, and I'm just going to leave it in theory, unless you guys have an absolute fact that the county's money pot is going to go down? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, I guess either way, we're taking it, but I'm on a roll. Don't stop me because I'll forget, then we're screwed. So, so, that part is, it's very frustrating to sit there and listen to that. Now, I, Sherilyn, I give you and Wally a huge amount of credit for sitting through and participating in that. And the group is very gracious. They really are. And if you look at what we've, what we've been given, they're, they've been exceptionally generous with us. But, I look at this now and say, of the projects, we're no longer going to be held to, it's only sewer lines, it's only this, and it's only in our redevelopment area. We, all of a sudden now, can start to look at projects that are beyond those, that one little segment of our community, or that one, one neighborhood, or two neighborhoods, or three neighborhoods. So, I, and I'm with everybody else. I'm like 49, 51, and I'm not sure, you know, sometimes I'm 49, sometimes I'm 51. But, I really think we, we need to think about this from a projects and programs perspective. Is it really going to take a whole FTE?
Yes.
Katie's doing 20% of the work already. So, will this person be able to do?
It's going to be a person.
I don't know. I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there. I realize we're all intimidated by this unbelievable, what we perceive to be the mountain, but let's not get swayed away from some of the flexibility and the things that we're going to potentially be able to offer. Like I said, I'm not married to it. Right now, I'm 49. In a minute, I'll be 51. I'm just, I want to throw out the other side of that. That's all.
Vice Mayor?
Mayor?
Yeah.
Yeah, go right ahead, ladies, because we're dying.
Mayor, Councilmember Stip. Well, I just, I've been going to the meetings for eight years, and you know I'm with you on this.
I know.
But, through, Christine and I have contacted a lot of communities, not just in Arizona, through finding out about entitlement, and we've learned some interesting things, that some urban county programs are designed completely differently. And so, if we do decide to stay in the urban county program, we would like to have a discussion about maybe talking to the county about the design of the program. The five-year consolidated plan for the county is going to have to start being updated. We need a new one starting July 2015. And so, there might be an opportunity there to change some of those things, reduce the staff time we're spending now on some of that, and maybe make it a little better process. We had no, I mean, it was like a mind blow. We had no idea that there were urban county programs that ran completely differently, and we already even talked to staff a little, and they're like, "Yeah."
So, you'll actually be able to look in their face and actually have a conversation? Not on a telephone, not on a computer?
Whose face? The county?
The county.
Oh, yeah.
Well, they do all the time.
We've been meeting with them a lot.
I'm just pointing that out. There's a person, a face.
And to bring this a little bit closer to, I think, what some of your concerns were, Councilmember Stip, we are following the rules as they've been created by HUD. There is actually a formula that is used by the government to come in with a dollar amount that communities are, as we've, as Katie's described, entitled to. The county CDAC process was created to try to make sure that there was a way for the, for the money to be parsed out fairly. And while Guadalupe definitely deserves what they've received, they've also received a lot of money.
Yes, they have.
Okay, and yes, it's definitely based on need. But, what we're finding through these conversations is that county can also change the process to the point where that formula is actually allocated to the city, and it's a similar, it's similar to the entitlement process. You have more choices on projects, more choices on how to execute. They continue to be the oversight and provide the staffing and the knowledge and the depth that they have to make sure that we follow the rules. Now, this is all something we're learning. We have yet to find a process that is the same as CDAC. So, we're seeing some flexibility, potential, only potential, in the county program that gives us the sense that there might be potential to change it. But, we would have those conversations with Councilmember Holman and, and take a look at that.
There was, there was one thing that in my little rant that I forgot to ask was, can we have someone else administer this program for us? Can we take our $58,000 administration and offer the county $50,000 a year to administer it for us?
Thank you. We could. We could hire a consultant. We could create an IGA, just like other programs. There's IGAs to administer. You have to get the other party to agree to it.
Well, yeah.
But, that's an option, yes.
We could, this could become a revenue source for Avondale, who's already doing it, who does half of our social service stuff anyway. And I realize I'm generalizing at this point, but it's 8:30, so.
Vice Mayor?
I appreciate the discussion, but I'm not convinced to change. I want to stay with the urban county.
Councilman Osborne?
Well, I appreciate all the discussion, and I do believe that our city, we are growing so much. Our population is changing, and I do believe that we're right at that cusp of needing some of those programs, needing some of the funding that has the flexibility to use it for other things. We are there. However, I think we need to sit this round out and go for the next invitation. I believe that it's not going to generate enough income for us. I think it's going to be just more or less growing staff, really. You know, it's not going to, you know, we may be able to start some things that we like, but I think that it's going to be just kind of a burdensome type of thing that you're going to have to go through that's just not, it's probably just not worth it yet. And so, I think we should look forward to the next invitation, myself.
Yes.
If I could add, I hadn't heard this conversation as far as perhaps the flexibility, and it would seem to me with the change of leadership at the county that it might be the ideal time to, to have an open ear to that kind of thing. I think that's very, very interesting and would, again, I would say would, could very possibly be the way I would, it kind of makes me lean more towards the urban.
And thank you, Councilmember Holman. I just want to apologize. We haven't got a chance to meet with you to talk about it. We're just learning all these new things, but we'll definitely sit down and talk about it.
That's fine, but I mean, I just kind of reinforce, is what I was saying. Well, I appreciate all the work you've done, too. And you could tell from this whole conversation how I felt about it from the very beginning. I've been weighing this in my mind. And first of all, I just look through MAGA, and I just think about EPA and when a dust issue comes up. The documentation is, it is truly this high that we sent out of Arizona. I don't want to send this high for asking for something. And I don't want us to be where we're talking through a piece of paper that says, "You will do this." I want to be able to get in your car, go over to the county, and sit down and discuss some things. You will not have that with the federal government. And as far as budgets go, everybody's got budget costs. So, you know, you're not going to get any more from them. And I would think, if I listened to the message about coming out of Washington, about people who have money and people who don't have money, I don't think this city will get much because they're looking at a different level up there. They're looking at changing society the way it is. And we work hard as a city, and we have some areas in our city deserve this. So, I don't feel badly, I'm sorry, Guadalupe, but I don't feel sorry about that. I think the process has been fair, and I'm not ready, personally, I'm not ready to jump up into the entitlement. You know, entitlement has kind of a negative thing anyway to me, so I like the urban definition than being entitled. I think we work really hard for that urban money. We don't need them to entitle us for it. So.
So, I'm seeing a, I'm hearing a consensus that we want to stay with the urban county right now?
I'm thinking so.
Yes.
You just want to nod your head, everybody.
Okay. Then, what will happen is, we'll write a letter to HUD and Maricopa County telling them that. It'll come from the city manager. This summer, we'll see a new three-year cooperative agreement. Just as a side note, other cities have broke that agreement in the past when they became entitlement. So, for some crazy reason, the federal government said, "Let's triple CDBG funding." We could, you know, negotiate with the county, you know, so that is a possibility. But, otherwise, we'd be looking at 2018 to look at this again.
Yes. Sherry?
And I know-
I know this is getting like-
Councilwoman Lortano?
I just have a quick question, because you said you could go talk to the county, and maybe we could make some changes. Do we have anybody else on board, like somebody
Do we have anybody else on board, like some of the other cities that are saying, "Hey, you know, at least, let's all go make these changes?" Are we going to be the little rebels and get everyone involved?
Thank you. Great question. We haven't really gone forward without talking to our council member representative, but we don't, do know there's a couple of communities that would also greatly benefit from changes.
Good, good. Well, I think you got the answer, and you said there's going to be a yellow paper. Did you say something else?